Next item, please.
Special reports, trauma-informed schooling. Ms. Zainab Al Ghaneem. Ms. Hannah Al Fassi. Dr. Violet Swedan.
And I think we'll let them go on the, they contacted myself for this session, so I'll let them, I think they're online virtually. And I'll let them go ahead and I know the board has their presentation, so.
I believe there's a third student with us. Zainab, is that correct?
Yes, hello, my name is.
Okay, thank you very much, just wanted to make sure.
Would the board be presenting it, or would I have to present?
Zainab, go ahead and get started then.
Okay.
And the board has your PowerPoint, we have your PowerPoint in the folder.
Oh, okay.
But I mean, yeah, it's great if you display it.
Okay. Um, I don't know how it looks like.
We can see your presentations, Zainab.
Okay, is it presented now?
Yes.
Yes, you're good.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Hello, my name is Zainab Al Ghaneem.
Hello, I am Jude Al- Altai.
And I'm Hannah Al Fassi.
And we are here today to talk to you about one of the most pressing concerns in regards to the children in our society.
As a team, we have been working tirelessly to bring awareness to mental health decline in this generation. Hannah and I both served on the SEL subcommittee, and we are here to build upon what we all agreed on from there.
We will be going over our purpose, the problem, and our solution to create a safe and beneficial school environment.
My friend Jude and I have been working since the beginning of the school year about this issue. And we care because we have had our own issues dealing with with mental health and have not had the proper support to deal with it. Teachers notice the change in our behavior, but they themselves are limited in their own response. We need to do better for our students, our parents, our staff, and our community.
As a student who gets to go through six classrooms in seven hours, in those transitions between classes, we go through different classroom environments. Classroom environments, not just the physical, play a role in student's behavior. As a student, if I feel comfortable, I am way more likely to thrive.
I have always felt like I didn't receive the right protocol when dealing with mental health at school. I also know a lot of my friends that deal with these struggles on a day-to-day basis that interferes with their academics. I just want to go to a school where everyone feels like they belong, and I know that a support system is behind them when they need help.
Our objective is to create a trauma-informed school in which administrators recognize and respond to students who need mental health help, essentially promoting more awareness and resources to those affected by mental health.
The school supports all students to feel safe physically, spiritually, emotionally, and academically.
Mental health is a controversial topic in our community, and it refers to the well-being of the mind. The ability to cope with stress, a person's emotional state, including trauma such as PTSD, a person's ability to reason and make good, healthy decisions, and overall psychological well-being.
In order to create a nurturing environment, we must create a trauma-sensitive school in which the school addresses students' needs in holistic ways, taking into account their relationships, self-regulation, academic competence, and physical and emotional health and well-being. The school explicitly connects students to the school community and provides multiple opportunities to practice newly developing skills. The school embraces teamwork, and staff share responsibility for all students. Leadership and staff anticipate and adapt to the ever-changing needs of students and the surrounding community.
COVID-19 has heavily impacted the mental state of most students who previously relied on social interactions and now feel isolated. Anxiety and stress are in most households can lead to depression, and an increase in domestic abuse is being reported.
One in fifteen homes are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, and ninety percent of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence, as reported by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence.
The University of Macau in China insists the general public is under insurmountable psychological pressure, which may lead to various psychological problems such as anxiety, fear, depression, and insomnia.
During this time, though, it is important to focus energy on providing economical relief and ensuring everyone has access to the education they deserve, it is just as important to focus on students' mental health.
Mental health is usually given attention in most times, the most urgent circumstances. However, that is not the case for everyone. Who is dealing with mental health issues?
Refugees are coming to our schools with trauma war from nations like Syria, Yemen, and Iraq. As well, students feel pressured to perform well in school, experiencing chronic anxiety, leaving them paralyzed to their own mental health state. And students who are dealing with mental health issues but have not been identified due to inadequate or lack of services to youth. Students who grew up in poverty or death of a loved one and have experienced trauma as a result. And literally anyone, mental health does not discriminate and includes no boundaries.
A federal emergency hotline for people in emotional distress registered a more than 1,000% increase in people compared with the same time last year. The psychological effects of quarantine alone included heightened risk of stress, irritability, insomnia, and depression, all factors that correlate with suicide, said Dr. Catherine Frank, who's the chair of the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Health at the Henry Ford Health System. It is a huge problem that has been pushed to the side for far too long, and now we cannot neglect it any further, because if we do, the consequences will be dire.
The student to counselor ratio at Fortin High School is 420 students, one counselor. However, the MDE recommendation, a student to counselor ratio is 250 students to one counselor.
This is significant, because this can lead to impersonal relationship between counselors and students, which can make it difficult for students to reach out for help. Counselors are overbooked dealing with scheduling students and testing, leaving no room for students' mental health.
Mental health illness in half the population starts to become more prevalent around the age of a freshman in high school. Catching early signs of mental illness is important, because early treatment may also lessen long-term disability and prevent years of suffering.
Results showed that mental health was a significant predictor of future academic performance, and that, and that overall, students whose mental health improved between first and third grade made better academic progress than students whose mental health did not improve or worsen.
This is an investment for our school district. In order to illustrate the immediate attention needing to be showcased, we conducted an anonymous assessment of students' mental health in regards to their well-being.
One hundred and thirty-five responses were reviewed of a random sample of students on all grade levels, and in that poll, we have noticed some trends.
The answer to the question, "What are your hobbies?", the highest response was hanging out with friends. Mental health declines when the number of social environment declines or are limited completely. Quote, "When we communicate with people face-to-face, it can help to make us more resilient to stress factors in the long run," unquote.
The majority of students would like to go back to school in the fall. However, it is not the reason to make this. A student should have a home that is emotionally exhausting. No one knows what goes on at home, and if they're at school, it makes it easier for us to avoid our family. Another student replied, "I'm with normal social interaction." This pandemic has taken away what normal is for me. Our classrooms would be the same, would discuss thematic or critical issues, but now it's all bottled in.
However, twenty-five percent of, is also enough for the reason you may think. A student said they don't want to return because they have cried less and felt better about being away from toxic people. And al- almost all tho- all of those who said no claim that they have mental health conditions that would prevent them from returning to school, even going as far to say the reason behind this was because of anxiety, major depressive disorder, and ADHD.
Students were given a chance to share their thoughts and personal stories at the end of this survey. We will share the ones that resonated with us the most. One that impacted me was, "I have never been mentally okay, and the school systems do not care at all, and they never have." They treat every student as if there is nothing going on in their lives other than school, as if every student has the capacity to perform the best they can.
Trigger warnings, mentions of suicide. I once told a social worker that one of my link crew freshmen was severely depressed, and the student showed pages and pages of negativity that she has written, mostly suicide, and the social worker said she seemed okay. She's severely at risk, and it doesn't make sense to look over something like this.
I know someone who died from COVID-19. I want to feel safe.
As students, we know that you have been addressing the topic of social emotional learning through the strategic plan. Although this has been improved in the staff level, we would like to talk to you about how the youth believe this can be improved on the student level based on the plan.
The district's promise is to increa- increase career readiness through the career development education. However, in the U.S., people with mental illness are two to three times more likely to be unemployed, and their employment rate is fifteen percent points lower than those without any mental health problems. They're, they're, they are also more likely to call in sick, often for longer periods, and to underperform at work, based on the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. Not knowing how to deal with social aspects of a job is difficult for a person. Maybe even now, where positions are social, they need to know how to depend on themselves. It isn't just career readiness now we need to prepare our students for, it is in the future. Where people would need mental health preparedness and tools to be successful in career. For example, what happens when you're too stressed out when someone takes credit for your work? Or when you can't find the motivation to get up in the morning, which a lot of students can relate to now. Another promise is to incorporate SEL activities at each level, and a piece of evidence for that is being Care to Core. Care to Core is less than one hour in one day that not all students get to experience. The American Psychological Association agreed that a person needs sufficient amount of treatment before their mental health could be improved. That one hour, that one day is, that hour and one day is not enough evidence to prove that SEL is being incorporated effectively. Another promise is to implement behavioral intervention strategies at each building, with evidence being attendance and discipline, discipline records, specifically reduction in truancy, and suspension rates. Almost all of these issues discussed are emotional issues. As in the case of attendance, the British Journal of Psych- Psychiatry links lack of attendance to poor mental health. In students' cases, we audit students who have ten or more absences, further enforcing consequences rather than positive enforcement. Continuing the cycle of punishment, there is no surprise considering that the three largest psychiatric institutions in the U.S. are jails, turning students into punishment, turning students to the pun- punishment pipelines.
After a traumatic experience I endured, I was said to be fine because of my good grades by a school social worker. We are punitive in bad behavior rather than acknowledging the root cause and silencing high-functioning students. The economy has become relatively stable over the years, allowing more flexibility to administer incentives and job benefits successfully. Eighty-eight percent of employees reported overall job satisfaction in the U.S. And one of the top five contributors of employee job satisfaction is opportunities you use with skills and abilities in your work. However, counselors are currently si- sitting on their education and mental health, and instead do not attack of sorting students into classes. The effort for that is to promote surveys, however, that is not living up to its potential. Simply asking a question and ignoring the answer is not only ignorant but dangerous. According to that, we staff models a healthy school environment, including social, emotional, and physical health that is desired for students. Schools are supposed to take in the emotional health of students, yet one hundred and thirty-five respondents of a survey unanimously agree that there should be more mental health resources in school. The executive director in a school is responsible for the right leadership, achieves school board goals, and administer academic programs, with the highest standards of excellence in operating systems and educational programs. How, or as a student of one of Dearborn Public Schools, I feel that MDE-SIP activities are close to non-existent and certainly ineffective. Creating a mental health program seems like the only initiative worthwhile. The Michigan School and Program Framework mentions a lot of interesting ideas, such as communication between teachers and administrators, teachers and teachers, administrators and teachers with members of the community. What it does not mention is actual needs of students. Giving out surveys and yet doing nothing about the results, it's more of a crap given to students by unwilling teachers.
In the focus of stakeholder engagement, a goal of the district is to increase parental involvement in school through a strengthened homeschool connection. We could do that by sending out surveys to parents, as the ongoing public schools did, asking parents if they think their student needs more mental health help or resources. Students whose parents were involved with their school have a link to better grades and better mental health. A lack of perceived parental involvement appears to have the opposite effect on students with poorer grades and poor mental health, based on the Canadian Journal of School Psychology and the College of Education. Currently, if students are on academic probation, there's an ongoing log in which all of a student's teachers contact them one to two times a week, collecting up to twelve contacts a week. If teachers do not get contact, they'll be logged to a social worker or liaison, and they will attempt to contact the student's parents. If no contact is reached, there will be a home visit. This is for academic purposes. Now imagine if this were implemented for mental health purposes. If we ask students, "Would you benefit from someone having, having someone call you once a week? Would you appreciate having a space to talk to other students?" Imagine we ask students, "Would you benefit if someone called your parents and checked up on you?" Imagine we ask students what they need for their mental health. Now, it is no question that we have a substance abuse issue amongst our generation. Parents, teachers, health experts are all scrambling to tackle the epidemic of vaping, but we are saying that this problem at its root is a mental health issue. The Journal of the American Medical Association aims to take a broader look at the link between vaping and depression. The study surveyed almost one million Americans and asked them about their e-cigarette use and their history of major depression. The results showed a significant correlation. Similarly, Anne Clint's psychiatry credits those who use e-cigarettes were significantly more likely to have mental health histories of ADHD, PTSD, gambling disorder, and anxiety, reports of low self-esteem, and endorsed traits of impulsivity. The Access Substance Abuse Program is supportive of our initiative to include mental health education in the correlation that e-cigarette users were found to be more than twice as likely to have been diagnosed with depression. Another goal is to increase partnerships with community organizations to provide increased learning opportunities with stakeholders. Two states, Virginia and New York, have added mental health education to their curriculum. Increasing a partnership with Access will directly increase learning opportunities for students by teaching them proper mental health help. Awareness is one step of the process, but we have also competitive solutions in order to make our school environment the best, safest, and most capable environment it could be.
Because right now, mental health is more important than academics. With it, counselors would be able to focus their time from scheduling students' classes to nurturing students' mental health.
With student check-ins, we can focus on students' emotional health and well-being rather than what classes they're taking or discuss what their career goals are.
The effects of this will elongate to success in years to come. A national study of more than eleven thousand students in Chile found that mental health in first grade is assessed with brief standardized screens was one of the strongest predictors of performance on national achievement tests of language, mathematics, mathematics, and science, three years later.
With one scarce, we have created a plan to ensure the costs remain minimum, and since no outside hire is required, since counselors are already certified to speak to students in regards to student check-ins, the only cost would be the scheduling program itself. While the MDE model is free, it will actually cost us in the long run. Our needs since the past twenty years have changed. The Michigan model for health curriculum is not what is needed now, it is the outdated status quo. Like in math, language arts, science, and other subjects, a curriculum surrounding health, specifically mental health, should be applied to be taught and not simply uttered. It will cost us forty thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars to implement a computerized scheduling program for all six through twelve students in different public schools. But it will only cost us twenty-two thousand five hundred twelve to implement it in a school the size of Fortin if we pilot it there. This will actually save us thirty-four thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars from hiring another counselor.
Through our work and research, we have attracted many supporters in our community. Access has generously donated their time and volunteers with mental health education to further our initiative. When counselors meet with their students and they feel that the student needs more support, they will be sent over to a trained Access staff to provide that support. And parents who think their student needs that, need that support now can utilize that partnership as soon as they would like with their su- with their support and many other community workers. With a background in mental health, students will be nourished and continue to grow. While the district has collaborated with organizations in the community, my peers and, my peers' experience and I have not been the most impactful when it comes to those coordinations. In my freshman, in my freshman year health class, a lot of these issues were presented on substance abuse, alcohol, tobacco, and impacts on the brain, social, emotional, and academic, how to deal with anxiety, depression, PTSD, and other mental issues. Were simp- were simply uttered and not taught. These organizations were not utilized in a way that changed my behavior or state of mind for peers, for my peers and I, in any way that I observed.
Restorative practice training through the district for our teachers and cilleri staff would be implemented district-wide. We want this to be required for all staff. We recognize that not all staff's comfort allow them to talk to students about their feelings, but simply training teachers on restorative practices allows them to understand that students are multi-dimensional people with reasons backing their actions, that a child's actions are due to their past or current and/or their mental health, so that the students are not judged quickly based on their grades or behavior. There was a report of an eighty-four percent drop in suspensions for sixth graders during the first year of restorative practice implementation in a Texas school. Why? A team of researchers in 2016 concluded that teachers can develop an empathetic mindset about discipline, and that these mindsets can directly affect student suspension rates. And now, more than ever, we need that empathetic mindset. My own experiences with restorative practices has changed the way I communicate. I learned and realized we need to express our fundamental universal feelings when wanting to restore harm with friendships, teachers, parents, and whomever. I need to communicate to transcend language, age, or nationality, and it wasn't a singular moment, but I began to take responsibility for my actions. I began to apologize more freely and communicated the way I felt without shame.
The district is incorporating classroom time dedicated to SEL. We believe five to fifteen minutes should be used to reflect and discuss what we personally need to do to close our screens and be productive. Setting and living your intentions allows you to focus on who you are in the moment, to recognize and live your values, and to raise your emotional energy, which in turn raises your physical energy. Focusing on a goal illustrates what we don't have, it leads to negative thinking and a sense of failure. Giving an emphasis to intention sets the tone for the day and can lead not only to, can lead to not only success, but happiness. The short answer is we need mental health resources. We need support in schools, or else who knows what the future might hold. We need to pilot a scheduling program in Fortin, and that way counselors can put their educational background and mental health to good use.
We need an available list of resources that students can utilize, so we don't have an instance in which one of my friends was roaming the halls of Fortin looking for someone to help her, all while going through an anxiety attack. And when she finally did find somebody, she'd be sent to someone else three different times. We need to ask students and parents if they think they or their student needs mental health resources now. We need student check-ins in order to sustain a healthier, more successful school environment. We need to further discuss a possible introduction of mental health curriculum to teach students and teachers how to address mental health concerns or social emotional learning.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Great job, uh, it was a very great job, so thank you, Zainab, Jude, and Hannah. Before we get to questions, uh, I'm gonna have Dr. Malakal.
Can I?
Yeah, I think we have Dr. Swedan wanting to make some comments too.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Dr. Swedan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, first of all, I'm very proud of the students. I hadn't seen their presentation. Uh, and so this is absolutely a hundred percent student-led. And our, the students that were on, were part of the SEL committee. I'm glad they brought up some of the things that they brought up, but there are some things that are already in place that they may not be aware of in the district. I know Zainab mentioned that we wanted to give our students an extensive list of where to go for help, and we, today, at today's SEL subcommittee meeting, we put together a very long list of resources that we're gonna make available to teachers and students and parents, so that if there's a need. In terms, I know that restorative practices was mentioned. So, the district right now has ten tra- trained ten staff members who are qualified to train students and staff. I can tell you that myself and Tara Hadad, who's now at the college, we trained a group of students at ETSO on restorative practices to help them work with their peers. And so I would love to, you know, for us to do more of that, and we do have the resources to do more of that. The other thing about wanting, the students mentioned about wanting to have more mental health resources available at the school, I just want to share with the students that Mike Salee put a group together just this past few weeks, where we are in conversation with EverFi, and they have a free program that I actually spent some time on today reviewing, and it went through all the mental health issues that some of the students discussed. And it's a program where students have to spend time with it, teachers spend time with it. There's a pre and post survey that's taken, and it really is very involved. And it's free because it's supported by organizations like, in each community, organizations take that up and support it. So in our community, I think it's the Lions Organization, I think United Way. I can't remember all of them, but anyways, so, students, we hear you, and we are really trying to do what we can to support your needs, and I know we're not doing enough. We absolutely are not doing enough, and we want to do more. And I love that you guys are passionate and are in pushing us to do more, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Swedan. I also love the fact how they connected this issue to our strategic plan, so good job there. Dr. Malakal, did you?
Yeah, I'll make a few, and I have Mike Asale's actually here too, I'm gonna have him jump in, but I wanted to make a couple of comments too. Again, appreciate our students, we know Zainab from our advisory council, and you know, we want to listen to our students, that's who, that's who we are here in Dearborn. When we had our committee for the reopening, guess what? We had students, strategic plans, students. And I appreciate the work that the three students did, and they put a lot of research into it, I know they reached out to me, they reached out to you, and we were like, okay, we want to give a forum for these important issues with mental health. You know, we can always make improvements, but I also know we've done some things with trauma-informed learning, I'm gonna have Mr. Salee comment. The other thing I would say is this, we would love to hire more counselors and social workers. We actually had a CPI team that studied this several years ago. The issue is, is the budget. And so we actually need, you know, more appropriate levels of funding from the state and the federal. Now, we know we're in COVID-19 right now, but, you know, when that budget number was coming out, we were looking at different funding sources that have been cut over time, and you know, it's, it's too bad that the, um, the January budget forecast that we had from the governor was gonna bring some of those resources. One of the things that I did, and although the numbers looked, don't look great, we did add counselors several years ago, and we added lots of social workers as well, and we continue to add social workers. So, we hear the need, and there's some great social workers like Dr. Swedan and others in the district. And we also know, you know, there's gonna be individual students that have different experiences, and we asked them, you know, to reach out, um, you know, to their, to their, whether it be their principal or someone if they feel like they're not being serviced. But I also just got to say that I've worked with some very high-quality counselors and social workers, so we know when we get in, you know, we can always improve and do better, and when we hear from our students, that's what we want to do, and we will do that. But I will say, one of the problems we have with this whole thing is the budget, and it comes down to being able to staff it. Again, we've added, you know, staffing and counselors, um, and social workers, and we also, as you're aware, have, you know, as we look at mental health and other things, we have our graduation interventionists in these high schools as well that provide support for our students. In fact, we presented on that nationally at conferences and at state conferences, some of the trustees were part of that. I know Trustee Lane last year, and what, one of the things they do is they really reach out to those students. A lot of them were students that were suffering, and we had their testimonials of, uh, you know, both with counselors and with social workers, but testimonials of challenges they went through. And they had, um, and, and maybe it's something we may want to bring back here, but they talked about how they really had an impact. So again, we understand that as a staff, we want to improve, uh, we are listening to all of you, we take it very seriously, we appreciate you presenting. And, uh, Mike, do you want to jump in, Mr. Salee, and comment on some of the trauma-informed, um, training that you've been doing?
Absolutely, you know, and, and I second a lot of what both President Barry and, um, Dr. Malakal, you said. Great presentation by the students, truly student-led. I actually had the opportunity to speak to Zainab. I actually had the opportunity to speak to Zainab a couple of times over the week, so it was actually a privilege and honor. But yeah, you know, we, we understand there is some more work to be done. What we are looking at doing right now is becoming a trauma-informed district. And, and how we do that is with a district our size is we need to develop trainers. And what we're looking at right now is a train-the-trainer model. Last year, I know Ms. Shannon Peterson, along with Dr. Bazzy Gates and some other members of the Dearborn Public Schools community, actually started to go through some of the trainings, but unfortunately, they were cut short due to COVID. Well, this year, what we're gonna do is we're actually gonna bring the trainings to Dearborn. And our plan is hopefully to train over 100 staff members in trauma-informed instruction, who in turn, hopefully will train a lot of the staff at the individual buildings as well. In addition, I do wanna comment about restorative practices. You know, I saw that it was, it was mentioned within your presentation. You know, when I first came into special ed as a coordinator, we actually, our, our primary focus, and it still is, was restorative practice. And what we were able to do was we actually were able to, like Dr. Swaden said, train 10 people within the district who became trainers in restorative practice. And in turn, we trained administrators, we trained social workers, we trained teachers on truly developing that restorative culture within our school district. And as far as the discipline data is, you're absolutely correct. In fact, when we were really heavily involved within the restorative practices, we would develop some data, and it did show those similar trends to kind of what you spoke about in Texas. I don't know if it decreased our discipline by 80-plus percent, but we did definitely see a decrease within some of the, you know, some of our schools that were implementing the restorative practice, so on and so forth. In addition, with social workers, we're extremely thankful for them. We know they're sometimes the heartbeat of a, of a school building. You know, they're working with so much, and we are very grateful that not only with Dr. Malakal, but also the board support. You know, we have been able to add additional social workers over the last few years since I've been here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions?
If I, oh, if there's anything.
Go ahead.
In response to the money issue, the issue we had with the, the students being scarce and such, we included in our presentation that the, the, the program itself would require money. This way, counselors who actually have an education in mental health, that way you don't need to get any outside hires. They're already in the school. They have an education in mental health, and we just feel that they're not, you putting it to good use. They are, they're more busy putting students into classes, sorting them. And we researched the program that would instead, it would be a computerized program that would schedule the students instead, freeing up the time for it, and in the end, it would actually save us money because instead of hiring an outside hire, so. I needed to reiterate that.
Yeah, and instead of putting all the burden on social workers like we do in the past, we have access that's providing all the social workers to us. They generously offered this, and, you know, right now, that is written in. Sorry, go ahead, Dr. Swaden.
So, so two things. Access has always supported the schools, and they actually have had people come into some of our buildings and provide support. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't because of confidentiality and just so many things behind it. But we appreciate partnering with them. And I think, I, I think our car, our counselors do so much. I mean, I could just tell you, as a parent of four, and my kids are in college, if I left it up to them to choose what classes they would take, I'm not sure they would find the success that they found. It was important for them to be able to sit with their counselor, for their counselor to know where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are, and direct them in terms of college or job, help them through that. So I know our counselors do way more than just pick classes and put them in the computer. And I, and I, and I know you're not selling them short. I know that, you know that. It's just, I agree with you. It's such a complicated issue. And then I think for the social workers, I mean, I know firsthand how much running around they do, not just during the school day, but, you know, we're, we're in conversation after school, on the weekends, concerns about students, visiting students' homes. We did some stuff, I mean, I can tell you some stuff that I was involved in where with students who were absent, not for discipline reasons, but just weren't showing up, we called the home to find out what was going on. So there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scene that you may not be aware of. But what you're bringing are tremendous, tremendous points. And it's important that we stay focused on them and we do what we can. And like Mr. Sayley said, I love that we're moving into a trauma-informed school and that we have someone already lined up to work with our teachers and staff and students. And I hope that this stays in the limelight, this issue.
Thank you, Dr. Swaden. I personally didn't hear that our students were questioning the mo-, you know, the counselors. So they were just reporting stats, and I think these are stats that we know. We'd like to do better in that department, but obviously, you know, there's a money issue. I wanna go about the questions. We'll start out with Trustee Thorpe, please.
One issue that was mentioned in the presentation was COVID. So because we are gonna be starting the school year in an online format, and we don't know how long that'll last, we are gonna have kids that are gonna be socially isolated. What are we doing as a district to try to make sure that we're reaching out to kids from a mental health standpoint? Since they might not be getting the group situations or that face-to-face interaction we normally would?
I'm gonna let Mike comment, but I will say that it is built into our plan that we submitted. And it's part of the, it's gonna be part of the curriculum as well. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so actually, Trustee Thorpe, that's a great question. So part of the SEL committee's recommendation was the adapt, the adaptation of a, of a COVID-19 trauma screener. So our plan is, is to provide or at least administer this screener to all of our students in the district. And then, you know, from the, from the screener, what we would do is if we find that there are any situations or any students who need any additional support or help, we would definitely provide that moving forward. In addition, I think Dr. Swaden also spoke about EverFi, who's got a, an awesome SEL curriculum, who we actually implemented in some of our schools this year. Well, it's free to the entire district, and our plan is to hopefully implement some of this curriculum and embed it district-wide as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Trustee Moser?
The, the recommendations by the students are very evident. I think the administration should really take a look at this, especially the computerized check-in for the students. It seems like a great model that we need, n- need to look at, especially with schools that are heavily populated like Fortson and Dearborn as well. So I, I thank this, all the students for bringing all of these recommendations and that we really need to look into those holes and fill them in because mental health is real. It affects everyone. Not just a segment of the population, it affects all students. And as, as it was said, if their mental health is, is a huge indicator of their academic success as well.
Can I just comment on?
Dr. Malakal?
Thank you, President Barry. Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely do that, and I'll ask Mr. Sayley and Dr. Swaden to continue the dialogue. Secondly, Zainab's on my advisory council, so she'll have the ability to bring this up at any of our meetings, and we can dialogue that way, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Sayley as well to, you know, to continue that dialogue, or his staff and Dr. Swaden and others. So thank you.
Dr. Malakal, you keep taking credit for Zainab being on your advisory. She's also one of our colleagues.
Yeah.
Remember, she's, she represented the students at the board.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes, for sure.
We thank you for that.
She's very dedicated.
Are there any other questions? I can't see the. Trustee Petrikov, go ahead, please.
Yeah, we know that there is a real stigma with mental health issues and substance abuse in any community. Was any of that taken into account when we talk about student check-ins, especially an overreaching kind of every high school student should have a check-in, I think, where you may have pushback from either a student or a parent who are uncomfortable with that outreach when they don't feel that, that they don't want to acknowledge that there may be a problem with their student or are uncomfortable with the topic?
Yeah, I mean, that, the reality is, is yeah, you may have some that, you know, do not wanna come forward and, and get the support, but all we can do is be discreet, use discretion, the professional avenues with the, with the social workers and the counselors, and try to convince them we're needed to get help. The other thing we've done, as you're aware, is we've partnered with four different community. They mentioned Access, and we appreciate all of our partners, but we have other groups that we've partnered with for our drug prevention model that Ms. Charles headed up. And so, and in some of those trainings, it, it is, you know, you do have people coming forward and telling their personal stories of drug addiction and things and overcoming. And so I guess depending on the age of the student, depending on the parent, is we have to be discreet and try to counsel them and work with them. And I think that's where the social workers in our district are very good. Dr. Swaden being one of them, but many others. You know, that's why the principals, you know, everyone's always advocating for more counselors and social workers. And why? It's because of the work they do. Every year, I know the principals are saying, well, I need more social workers. They, you know, it's one of those positions that, because of the challenges that we're facing, I think you mentioned this COVID situation, whether it be drugs or other things, you know, there's just a great need for more support in those areas. So, Trustee Petlicov, it's a challenge, yes, and I think the organizations, those individuals are trained. And so that's why Dr. Bazzy Gates and Ms. Charles, specific to substance abuse, have been kind of our, the individuals that have been taking the lead for the school district, working with those organizations.
Thank you. Zainab, did you wanna follow up on Trustee Petrikov's question? Go ahead.
Yeah, Hannah, go ahead.
Somebody's raising their hand, so go ahead.
Oh, can I?
Please, yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on that question. So I was actually, last year, I was assigned a social worker, and I didn't have that personal connection with my social worker, so it was very hard to actually fix my situation. And so I would push back, so these weekly check-ins with the students from, with the counselors, it's just kind of like building a relationship and with those restorative practices. So you actually have that relationship and you'll ease into talking about your struggles. So I hope I can answer your question.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and another thing I wanna add on to that, thank you, Hannah, is if we have student check-ins that are normalized, basically, if someone comes up to lunch and says, oh, why'd you miss third hour? And then the student would say, oh, I was just with my counselor. It's something that's not stigmatized. And that way, students can more freely express themselves without feeling shame or afraid of what their peers are gonna say. And like in Hannah's case, when parents know it's with the school, they're comforted, they're comforted. At least in our community, I feel like my mom would feel comfort if she knows that it's with the school. And when we bring Access to the school, it'd be that level of comfort.
Thank you, Zainab, and Hannah, thank you for sharing your experience with us. To my colleagues, is there any other questions? If there are, just go ahead and speak.
I just wanted to say a couple of things, a lot of.
Trustee McDonald, go ahead.
A lot of what my thoughts were have already been mentioned. But it has been really a hot topic in a lot of the sessions that I've been to the last few years when going to conventions and those kind of things. It is top of mind. It's very important. I wanna thank the ladies for their work in the student-led initiative. I can tell the passion about this, and this is a very important key issue. I do believe the district is doing a lot for, to help students with mental health issues, but there's always more that we can do, as Dr. Sedan said. The one thing I just want to just throw out there, all of our students need to also look out for each other. Look out for your friends, look out for your siblings, look out for people in your circle. Because a lot of time, students are not comfortable bringing these issues to an adult anyway. So sometimes you are the best advocate for someone that you know personally. Again, whether it's a sibling or a sister or a friend or whatever. Because we know so often, students are not comfortable talking to adults, especially about private issues. So just keep that in mind. Sometimes you might be the lifeline to someone who needs some help. And you might be the ear that they need. And I'm not asking you to take on their mental issues yourself, but sometimes just to be a friend, just to hear them out, just to offer a hand or an ear, that can make a lot of difference in someone's life who's struggling. Excellent job, ladies.
Thank you, Trustee McDonald. Anybody else?
I believe we did.
Go ahead, Hannah.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Hannah.
I believe we did have a peer medi-, yeah, I believe we did have a peer medi-, mediator where peer, like, if there was a problem, you'd have two students come and they would discuss their problems. And that program cut short at Fortson, I believe. So if we could bring that back, yeah, maybe that could help. I just wanted to clear that up.
Good, thank you. Unless there's any other questions, I'll go ahead and wrap up. Zainab and her team, you did a, you did a wonderful job. I'm gonna call Dr. Swaden. We hear you. We do hear you. You got the attention of the board, the administration. Please follow up, and I know Dr. Malakal will follow up with you, so. You know what? To step up to the plate, as, 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 I believe you're all three seniors, right? And do a presentation like you just did, we're gonna go ahead and applaud you, and thank you very much, and good luck this year. Thank you, ladies.
And I just wanna add that they're putting a video, they're putting a video together for all the staff. We, and they mentioned today at the, our subcommittee meeting, they're putting a video together to stress the point of how important SEL is and for people to take notice of it. For, it'll be a two-minute video, so look out for it.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you.